Much of a response. We call the May 11th Operational Services and Policy Work Session Meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Board members, agenda review and approval. We have some modifications.
Mr. Sears, if it pleases the board, I would like to add before public comment a special recognition.
I second that.
Been moved and seconded, and we may have another one in moments. That's item five, become a special recognition, and we shift the other items down. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We'll add that as number five. Any other adjustments from the board or administration?
I request that you take the custodial contract extension off the agenda for now, leaving the program update under item 7B.
Could we get a motion to amend 7B?
So move.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Andrews, seconded by Ms. Byer, that we amend item 7B to be only custodial program update. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is so amended. We appreciate our guests' patience as we take time to do something that is very important to us as a board and really to the community because they provide a quality service to everyone that interacts with the board by phone and email. And they do so much more than that. Ms. Byer, would you care to?
Did you want to approve the minutes first?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I just wanted to jump to number five. Sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes, sorry.
Where would we be?
I was so excited.
So colleagues, I rise with a bittersweet celebration of our beloved board liaison, June Snyder. June Snyder has served us professionally, thoroughly, thoughtfully, and we are a challenging group to work for. She knows us all and loves us all and has always been professional and attentive to all of our needs. More importantly, she loves every community member in Durham, every student, every teacher, every parent, every stakeholder, and we would not be the district we are without her love and care and support. And she is retiring and wants to do that quietly, but we can't let her leave without a true heartfelt thanks from the bottom of our hearts. Everyone here is so appreciative of you, June, and all that you do, and we want just a small, small token of gratitude to you from the board and from the district. And, you know, what I love about you is that you've already got plans for volunteering in retirement. You've had those plans ready for over two years because you are not going to go quietly sit on the terrace somewhere. You're not going to go hang out at the beach or let people wait on you, but you're going to continue to love and serve the community, and you already have had those plans laid out. But thank you so much from all of us for your care and support and professionalism. We love you, and we'll be thinking about you in your retirement.
Thank you, everybody.
Nope, I just want to mess, I want to jump ahead. We're skipping public comment.
May we have the public comment signup sheets?
We have one person signed up, and if anyone has come in since then, we can have general public comment at that time. First speaker is Brian Callaway.
Let me first say that I do not particularly enjoy standing at this podium to dress you like this, especially after heartfelt goodbye like that. But as I stated to you last week, I'm driven by a deep belief that this institution is in need of reform and a complete realignment of how it conducts business, and this evening I'm going to elaborate a little bit on that. And history certainly shapes the present, so please allow me to quickly explain some of the steps that have led me to speak out more about the need for reform in this organization. Last summer, in the midst of the reduction in force that hit classified workers hard, I had a meeting with top administrators to ask several questions about the budget process, including why were people being cut while, for instance, 10 of the top DPS executives were still receiving over $6,200 each as annual travel stipends? That's a stipend on top of six-figure salaries. There's some disagreement on the merits of those payments, and the conversation ended with a stark declaration to me, quote, "What a lot of people don't know is that next year there will be another RIF. I hope you're able to continue to work at DPS." First of all, now that next year is here, I'm glad that this afternoon we're not talking about another RIF. But nonetheless, that thinly veiled threat of termination for asking for what I believe the Durham community and our fellow DPS employees would consider as a perfectly reasonable question is not the only form of vindictiveness I have faced from administration. I've been warned sternly by top administrators at the table right here in the hallway as I'm signing up to speak previously to, quote, "Be careful." I've had agenda-less SNAP meetings called hours before I was leaving town on personal vacation where I was assigned urgent, busy work that meant my vacation day started with four hours of computer work out of a hotel room. I say these things so you can understand a bit of how I got to this point today. I believe that reform is urgently needed in this district. I would say we are not on a sustainable path. In my two and a half years, I've already seen a host of great teachers and other employees unnecessarily burdened by the DPS system and even driven away by it. I believe the core of our institutional culture needs to shift. When we have executives with no after-hour duties who drive DPS vehicles home on a daily basis across three county lines, it shows that priorities have become misplaced. One could write a book about all these seemingly small instances, and I hope many of those practices will cease in the days ahead, but their prevalence speaks to the silos of power that exist and allow a misappropriation of priorities to pervade this district. Giving our pending openings in senior leadership now appears to be our best chance yet to reset our trajectory. I dream of a DPS that is free of its nepotistic entanglements, where the needs of our students in classrooms are prioritized above all. Thanks.
Thank you. Did anyone arrive late or wish to be a part of the general public comment? We will also have public comment before each agenda item. Yep, if you'd like to, please state your name when you come to the podium.
Good afternoon, board and everybody else that's here today. My name is Walter Bestwick, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the students Durham County, not only from DSA, where I work as a driver's ed instructor and a coach. I actually have some students here today, but all Durham County because I work with students from all the schools in Durham County. It is our responsibility as, board's responsibility as well as our responsibility, to put these students first. I decided to coach and drive driver's ed for that reason because these students deserve good instruction, and we need to preserve what we're doing in the schools across the county. As you know, DSA was founded from a school that failed. DSA has been the number one school in the state, and that is due to what you have done as a board to support our students, and we want to continue that. DSA isn't the only school at issue here. DSA is comprised of students from all of Durham County, and so if DSA is the best school in the state, it's a win for Durham County as a whole. It's a collective, and it's all of our responsibilities as well as all of our victory when a school does that well with the resources that they have and the diversity that it maintains. It's our responsibility to provide what the students need first. I'm appealing to the board to preserve all of the teaching positions. I know that that's difficult, and it's going to be a tough decision one way or the other, and decisions will need to be made that affect everybody in the county, but our responsibility is to the students first. To me, this isn't a management versus labor issue. There are ways for us to work together to solve this issue, starting in the central office and streamlining central office down through every school in the county. It's something that we need to work together to do, and if the board so chooses and we're able to work together to continuously improve not only the central office but also the schools, we fix this issue at the central office now, and it gets fixed and the schools benefit from it from now forward. This is done, Toyota does this, they call it Kaizen. Their employees and stakeholders generate a million new ideas for improvement every single year, and they implement them, and that's why the company is so successful. We can do that here. Our responsibility is to the students, and we owe it to them to improve not only central office but every single school so that we're all raising the tide and floating a boat and making the school system the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Double check me. One more public comment? Great. State your name for us, please.
My name is Lauren Jones, and I am a junior at DSA, and I spoke at last week's meeting, but I kind of just want to reiterate the point that a friend of mine made last week, and it was essentially saying that I understand money doesn't grow on trees, and this is a very hard decision to make, but whatever you need for, like, me personally to be, oh, okay, whatever you need for, like, me personally to be able to do to make sure these budget cuts don't happen, I'd be willing to do it if it's fundraising, if it's bake sailing, even though I cannot bake to save my life, I will because I truly believe in the arts, especially DSA, and not just at DSA, but like Hillside, because Hillside has one of the best theater programs in Durham, and it's my base school, and I play in the pit band for DSA, or Hillside sometimes, you know? So, like, just, yeah, like, whatever you need us to do, I feel like as a community we'd be willing to step up and do it. And if it's a, like, I write books, I've got book sales, so if it's even, I simply just, like, giving all the sales that I make from these books to the school board, then I'll do it because I really do not want to see writing or any, or guitar or band or any program go away because I've been there for three years, and I truly wouldn't be the person I am sitting right here today if it hadn't been for those programs. Like, I literally just walked in, and I feel like without those programs, I wouldn't have had the guts to say, you know what, I'm going to speak, so just let us know what we have to do, and I promise it'll get done.
Any more general public comment from those in here or those in the hallway? All right, then I think we are on item six, financial services. Item A is the 2017-18 budget approval, and we do have public comment on the budget in particular. We have four speakers. We'll start with Walter Bestwick. Oh, all right. Next is Laura Timas, Timas? Timas?
Hi, I'm Laura Timas. I'm the parent of two kids at DSA, a 10th grader and 11th grader, and I want to express my thanks for all that you do to the, for the schools in Durham and for my children. They've had a wonderful experience at DSA, and I'm hoping that their last few years there can be just as wonderful. We've been so lucky to be at DSA under Mr. Hawkes' direction. Of course, all the parents in Durham are jealous when you get your kids into DSA because it's such an exceptional school. My children have had the wonderful opportunity of the great education there, so some specific things they've benefited from. We are at that school because we love the diversity of the school that that brings and the arts program and the excellence of the academics. Last night, we were at the guitar concert by the excellent teacher, Mark Davis, and the kids just adore him. So he, you can tell his passion that he brings to his teaching goes directly to the children. They got up on stage and expressed their gratefulness. All the parents and the children cheered for him, and to have a teacher that makes the children want to go to school and have passion for what they do that then flows into other areas is so exceptional. Mark also gives back to the school by being a JV soccer coach and is with those kids in the classroom and on the field, helping them to grow in so many ways. Other ways that my children have benefited from the excellent support there is at DSA through the academic support services. So not all children are perfect, and they need some guidance from time to time. So my children have benefited from behavioral guidance from the support staff there. If they had more out-of-school suspensions because there was not the support staff to handle children with behavioral issues within the school, I think our children would be very negatively impacted as well as the entire community. I know there's been a lot of discussion on how out-of-school suspensions disproportionately affect African-American males in the community, and I think we need to do everything we can to support all members of our community and to keep the children in school because we all know that when kids are suspended out of school, what are they going to do? They're not studying. We all know this, right? And you're also greatly inconveniencing the lives of the parents that are trying to show up at work. So I really appreciate the support system that Mr. Hawkes has in place at DSA. Another specific example where the support staff has been so helpful is we have a program called Power Lunch. So when grades dip, the kids get the opportunity to work with some teachers during lunch instead of goofing off, and let me tell you, they turn it around quick due to that great support. So if the budget were to negatively impact our teaching positions at DSA, we would lose arts pathways, the children would be very negatively impacted. Am I talking too long? And if the support services were negatively impacted, we would have more out-of-school suspensions. So I implore you to please maintain the integrity of the teaching that directly benefits the children, and if there's any way you can keep it on the more bureaucratic end of cuts, we would greatly preserve the quality of education that we have at Durham School of the Arts and all the other Durham schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brian Profits.
So one of the most frequent arguments that I have with people when we're doing our organizing in the buildings is I meet somebody who's excited in a building, and we talk about how they can get more people involved in the building, and then they say, well, I can't do that, the teachers here are so apathetic, right? And I always have this fight with them immediately because there isn't another human being on the planet who is less apathetic than a public school teacher, right? What they're talking about is the sense of despair that people feel about not having solutions ahead of them and the sense of fear that people feel about the real, you know, economic instability that comes with choosing this profession, right? And so what's interesting is in the last several weeks, several of those same kinds of organizers who have said to me, I don't know, man, like, people in my building are just, they seem like they're asleep, they're apathetic, I can't get them involved. I've walked into six buildings in the last week, and on every hallway I see, I see student art that is about saving our arts, saving our music classes, saving our PE, saving our world languages, right? I know y'all have seen those folks in here. I know y'all saw the photos of us going to Raleigh yesterday, right? I think some of y'all got some emails this week. So what I've seen, right, is that when people do have a sense of hope, when people do have a sense of possibility, as y'all's conversations about the possibilities of budget openings has happened, people act. And what's been really, really important, right, we're heading into the part of the year where there's no teaching, right? We're heading into the part of the year where it's just testing, 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 testing. If you all give us an opportunity to act, if you all give us some hope, if you all give us a budget worth fighting for, we will keep fighting, and our students will keep learning. In the time of the year when the state just wants them to test all the time, we'll stand by, y'all. We'll go to the county commission, we'll win the budget that y'all are fighting for, and our kids will be learning really valuable things about what it is that they're worth, what it is that hope looks like, right, and how this community supports them, and we'll have their back. So thanks for all the considerations that y'all have already made around thinking about this expanded budget ask. We want you tonight to play the leadership role that we know you can, and we'll follow, and we'll fight with you. All right? Thanks.
Thank you. Aviera Calero.
So I have three children at Club Boulevard, and I am the PTA president at Club Boulevard. I've met several of you. I wrote personally an email to all of you, I think, yesterday, and I think, so I was not planning on coming tonight because it's our, you know, kickstart to kindergarten, and so I will be going there to rally parents to come and join PTA next year and hope that those parents actually stay in DPS public schools because I've seen over the years 15 families leave to Wake County, to Charter Schools, to Chapel Hill, and it's because their kids' needs aren't being met here. I've seen teachers, year after year, leave for the same reason. We elected you to fight for us. We expect you to fight for us, and we expect you to go to the county commissioners and give a fully funded budget, and we will, in turn, turn out and push them. And then we will turn out and push at the state level. But if we don't have anything to fight for, we're just going to be despairing as parents, and we will leave. The parents who can will leave because they have other options. And so I, that's what I'm going to leave you with. You are elected officials. If we can't even get our school board to fight for us, you leave us with very little hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you.
Apologies, I should have asked if anyone came in after public comment, signup ended. Join us right there. If you could tell us who you are.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alexis King, and I'm a sophomore who's been a part of Durham Public Schools since I was in third grade. I wanted to say thank you for your time to hear our thoughts and efforts to ensure prosperity. My story begins in first grade with the construction of a staple crayon illustrated book during which the first seeds of passion were planted. When I think about how much my writing has grown since then, I always pinpoint it to that moment of pride and joy nurtured by my elementary school teacher. Only the satisfaction of exploring clay and discovering my first taste of fine art in fifth grade at Forestview Elementary School were able to match that feeling of accomplishment. It wasn't obvious to me at first either, but my introduction to basic music theory would become a key component in my current love for classical music, which is another one of my stress relievers and my interest in playing the piano. From that moment on, I knew my dream was to create. Something about that simple seven-page story sparked a flame in me and introduced me to a world that changed me in ways I never could have imagined. Without encouragement to continue, I would be a completely different person at a completely different school with completely different values. In middle school, I took my first writing class. The class was small, only eight students, but over the course of the year, we grew closer to each other than I ever have in any other class. A dusty English classroom became a confined, safe chamber for secrets and a creative sanctuary for us to truly be ourselves. This is the type of class that would be cut with this budget consideration. People often underestimate the power of an arts classroom. If it hadn't been for creative writing, my confidence never would have elevated to a point where I could even dream to speak in front of you today. During my first two years in this class, I discovered an abundance of qualities in myself and my peers that I otherwise never would have resurfaced. Pen and paper have often been the only thing standing between a struggling, misunderstood teen and the descent into a dark abyss of depression, which is often satisfied with methods of self-inflicted bodily harm. Writing and art in general guides emotion to translate from a silenced cry for help to a beautiful manifestation of pain. Eighth grade was a difficult time for the mental health of my friends and I. When we felt there was no place to go, we often depended on art to distract us from our struggles. My creative writing classroom was an environment where we knew we wouldn't be judged no matter how obscure our words are, were. We could escape from the stress and criticism of other aspects of school while refining our technique for sculpting beautiful sentences. My teacher was also extremely understanding and welcoming of our self-expression. I remember one day where we had presented poems so heavy that they had brought us all the tears, including the teacher. Every creative writing teacher I've ever had, including and especially my current one, have been some of the kindest and most encouraging, empathetic people I have ever met. I owe all of my growth and confidence to their guidance just as much as to the pathway My visual arts and creative writing classes have both taught me how to analyze critique, stand by my own ideas, accept my individuality, and allowed me to comprehend the power of an artist in social reform. Finally, I want to acknowledge the other Durham Public Schools teachers whose jobs are jeopardized. Last year, my social studies teacher, who now teaches philosophy at Durham Tech, taught my classmates and I to do more than just memorize dates and wars. He opened our minds to the psychology and depth of what it means to think for yourself and to consciously acknowledge your own influence on the world around you. He was also very understanding, and many of my classmates made close relationships with him, including myself. Without him, I would be a very different person, and his absence at our school has been very prominent, even though he's at a different place right now. Everyone deserves the resources and opportunities to learn in the best environment they can. We shouldn't have to compromise other schools' resources to ensure the bare minimum of others. We should all have the availability of an environment where we can be ourselves and expand our knowledge in the best way possible. I hope that given the enormous impact this decision has had on my life and those of many others, you will reconsider your methods of adjusting to the budget. Thank you.
Any other public comments on budget? Okay, Mr. Bowyer.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Before we get started this evening, I'd like to cover just a few brief points to address a few of the issues that surround us as we... as we move into this proposed budget and approved budget this evening. There's been some documents floating around, some things questioning the classifications of categories of expenditures within our budget and our reductions, so on and so forth. But again, I remind you, we work very diligently to use the chart of accounts and the budget structure that's outlined by public school law that we have to report our information based upon. Again, I say this as many times as I can take the opportunity to. We are very fortunate to be able to work previously with a budget advisory committee and now a zero-based budgeting committee. But as we're working through that process, we're trying to reshape the budget documents to continue to make a lot of information as readily available and as transparent as possible as we proceed through this process. I know all of us anxiously awaited the Senate budget. That does not tie to what we're presenting tonight. But there's a lot of things that were written into that budget that have direct financial impact. And again, it goes with the intricacies of how things are dealt within the budget, how they're posted, and how they're recorded. In the last two years, it's been a part of the structure of this budget to break things out for things that are allotted to schools and then things that fall into the three categories of administrative, operational, and academic services. What's been in question is the relationship to the budget format process to seeing those central office cuts listed in the format they are, then to the financial section. We all have to remind ourselves that the academic services department serves the schools, and some things are done at the district level. So some of their reductions are school-level reductions and are not gonna appear the way some of the correlations have been made trying to tie the financial activity. And I'll point that out a little more in detail as we go through this proposed budget. Again, there's just been questions asked that we will gladly resolve and provide future documentation to. In our budget book this year, at the suggestions of our committee, we have the detail of all of the current year reductions. We have that same format for last year, and we'll be glad to provide for anyone who wishes to see that. It was not put in our budget book, but we do have all the positions, all the departments, and every single line item that was cut within the budget. So as those things continue to be questioned, we welcome the opportunity to provide additional information and explanation. With that said, we also provided a revised version of our budget document. As we went through this process, we were very transparent that we had a few major objectives: to reduce our dependency on fund balance, cover our fixed costs, cover charter school enrollment, and deal with the uncertainty at the state level. We are very relieved that the K-3 class size did not get implemented at its full extent, but it does still have an impact to Durham Public Schools. And during this process, we were clearly stating we are reducing more than we needed to offset our current cuts because we know we'll have to make up things with the class size, other uncertainties, and those have just been repositioned between the 5,000 series and 6,000 series. And again, we welcome the opportunity to explain that further. With that said, again, most of this has been presented, but I'd like to quickly walk you through what's in the proposed budget as it exists right now. We come to you with the same breakdown that's provided by fund and object totaling $429,611,264. In this current proposed budget request, we have a request to our county commissioners for new money of $3,480,000, and that is substantiated by the net of the growth between charter schools and DPS. And right now, the current projections, even though it's changed during the budget process, the majority of that net growth will be at the charters and less impact on Durham Public Schools. We have to cover our projected salary and benefits that are in both the governor budget and the Senate version of the budget, and then fixed costs. So that's what totals to $3,480, and then we've made a separate request to our county commissioners to fund us separately in our grant funding so that witted school funds can go exclusively to witted school and not have to be shared with our charters, since that's a very specific purpose and function. Again, just for clarification and summary of what's on the table as we speak, these are the areas of the reductions that are being proposed. Again, in those three main categorical areas within central office personnel and operating budgets, administrative services, operational service, and then academic services. And this year alone is an additional clarification and understanding to what's being questioned. We list this as central office, but the district funds 35 academic facilitators are in this budget for reduction. When you look into financials, they'll show up in the 5,000 series, which is at the school level. So again, it's just, again, a different form of presenting that budget. But again, we total $8 million worth of central office reductions. And then the school building reductions that are proposed in this budget are the clerical months of employment, 247 months, assistant principals, 8.1 positions, and 24 teachers across the district, totaling $3.1 million at the school level for a total reductions of $11,241,000. What we also addressed at our last meeting was this budget defers a lot of needs. So this is a list that was provided at our last budget meeting of the needs that are being deferred within this budget that we address, we understand need to be addressed, not only in this budget, but in future budgets, but are having to be deferred at this point in time. So all that boils down to is our normal format of how we present because all of this turns into what we ask for in appropriation to the county. So as it currently exists, we'd be asking the county for a DPS appropriation of $96.5 million. Charter school appropriation within that would be $22.3 million. And then the portion of the 3.5 that would go to Durham Public Schools for new funding would be 1.7, for a total county appropriation of $120,000.5. We're fortunate in this county to have a quarter cent sales tax that was passed that funds education, both public schools and the community college. We receive roughly 70% of that. 9.2 of that would come into the K-12 budget, but $500,000 is specifically prior designated to pre-K. And then we receive 1.3 for our capital outlay expenditures outside of our bonds, and then 1.5 for witted. So that brings our total current funding request to the county of $1,132.9 million. Again, we're very proud of our accomplishment as a board in the school district. We have reduced our dependency on fund balance. So moving forward, we will not start, again, unless we have major state issues that affect our budget coming forward with that major hole. So we're under $1 million of fund balance being committed to this. And then our county uses $1 million of our lottery funds for debt payments. So that's the way the current budget would be proposed. We remind you of the future dates. We stand here tonight needing an approved budget that we would deliver to our county by our statutory requirement of May 15. The county manager will present his budget on the 22nd. The school system will be asked to come defend their budget to the county commissioners sometime between May 22 and June 12. On June 12, they'll hold their hearing, and on June 26, they will approve the county budget. Any questions or any...
So at this time, there may be questions, but I'd like to turn the floor over to Steve Under, who has represented the board at the Zero-Based Budget Committee throughout the year.
Thank you, Matt. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you to Aaron Bullier. The work that he's done has been tremendous. The level of transparency in the school budget, I think, is a model for North Carolina. And I think many of the questions that have come about how we spend our money are only possible because of the work that Mr. Bullier and his staff have done to get that information in front of us in a way that we can see and understand. I also want to say thank you, and I'm sure the other members of the board share this, to the many members of the community and staff that have, with some passion, advocated for their schools and for their teachers. I think it's fabulous to see people fighting for their schools, and I thank you for that. This budget's a culmination of a three-year process, really, and I think it's important to understand that context. We've been making up for reductions that took place at the state and have been making up for reductions from the difference between what's allocated and inflation. We've been spinning down our fund balance and making significant reductions in our spending, in particular, significant reductions in our administrative spending for three consecutive years. We have, I think, the system has done a great job of protecting schools in that process that's been very difficult. We know that with the changes to state, that many of our schools have been hit by reductions over the past several years. And so when we hear from the staff at schools saying, you know, "We just keep cutting and cutting and cutting," they are correct, and we're very aware of that. It's been a very painful process over these past years. I've been working with the Zero-Based Budget Committee this year, again, led by Mr. Bullier. That committee will be meeting in two weeks to make recommendations for the process by which we conduct our budget. I think that those recommendations are gonna have a significant impact on our budget next year, how we prepare that budget, how we understand the use of our money, how we assess how that money is being spent, and how we present that budget to the community. Our plan is for the committee to bring their recommendations to this board in June at this same operational services meeting. I do want to set a little context for, well, actually, no, before I do that. I just, I want to kind of take us back through the past several months. You'll remember that we reached a memorandum of understanding with the county last fall. That took quite a bit of work. And within that, the county advocated very strongly for a process by which we submitted our budget much earlier than we have in the past, much earlier than the legislation calls for, so that the school request would be part of the overall discussion within the county of their budget. The superintendent presented a budget that was fiscally sound, took into account the considerations Mr. Bullier outlined. It was a difficult budget. It was the budget that was just presented to us. There is no joy in that budget. And again, I will emphasize, it's the third year of this process of cutting. I'm pretty sure Dr. Lom's hair was, in fact, black. Three years ago, we started that process, and we can see what's happened over those three years. So again, so the county asked us to present this budget. We presented this budget. A conservative budget, a budget that really is a minimal budget for maintaining and, in fact, reducing some of what we do to stay within the guidelines that they asked for. And I think it's important that we support the work that the administration did to put that budget together. I think that we should note that there's not a member of this board, nor in the administration, that wants to make any reductions in our school, at our schools. We've avoided that from the local level. This is the first year that's been present, and none of us are happy to see that in our budget. I will say that the work the administration did to put that proposal in a context of equity and of addressing the needs for balance within the district were important and also need to be supported. I think, I know I speak for myself, I'm confident I speak for the board, that all of us would prefer to move towards equity by building up to equity and not by moving backwards to it. But the principle of equity is an important one, and I think we want to stand by that. We've heard loud and clear from the community, "Don't make reductions at the school level." And we've heard from many in the community suggesting that we could make greater cuts in administration and the use of consultants. I think that we have made some of those cuts. I think that we will continue to work in that direction. I know, having now done the work for the budget committee for a year, it's easy to talk about making those kind of cuts. It's very hard in practice to see where to do that. I think we can continue to move forward. I just want to emphasize that it's not an easy process to do. I do want to set a context for the next statement. And so I think we have a slide that reviews, actually, the other spreadsheet. No, that one. There we are. So this is a document showing county funding for Durham Public Schools and charter schools since 2008. And what we can see is that is, in fact, grown over those years. The funding at a per pupil level dropped slightly initially at the recession and then has grown. However, and this is the point that I want to make, if you compare that to inflation, we, in fact, have fallen well behind. And that, in effect, we have cut funding for schools in Durham by approximately $15 million because our costs do go up with inflation, even if our income does not. And so I think that that context is important for the next point that I want to make. And so on the next slide, what we see was just to try to organize in a somewhat different way the information Mr. Bullier presented. At the top is the superintendent's budget and organized around, really, three categories: the growth in the number of students in Durham, the projected increase in salaries and benefits, realizing that that's a bit of a crapshoot, but still a ballpark, and then our increase in fixed costs, which takes us back to the inflation that kicks in every year. And so that, the approximately $3.5 million is what the superintendent has submitted to us as our request, not taking into account witted school. So the next grouping there are the local school. It's the local school aspect of the superintendent's budget, the teacher positions, the assistant principals, and the clerical months of employment. And we see that that comes to a little over $3 million that, right now, we're proposing to make reductions at the school level. And then just below that, we see a category of deferred needs, all of which we have talked about at various points, that I've grouped under teacher retention. Because, to state the obvious, all of education comes down to teachers in front of kids. of kids, and experienced teachers in front of kids is how good education happens, and keeping teachers in classrooms is how we get better. And so, we've identified extracurricular pay. In fact, we have an agreement with the county of two years ago to move towards full funding of extracurricular pay. We, we moved halfway along that a couple of years ago and then stopped. The teacher extra duty pay is a category we've been talking about all year. And then parental leave is a benefit that the county has begun to offer their employees, and, and it seems that making that part of our teacher package would be a good move. And then there's various other categories that, all of which are important, all of which affect lives in Durham. So, that's kind of setting the context, and with that, what I would like to is, is make a motion, if I could, and then let the conversation, discussion be in the context of that motion.
Before you make a motion, can we go back to your previous slide real quickly? Because I think it's another, oh, not that one, yeah. So, clarification from Aaron and Paul. When did the quarter cent sales tax pass in Durham? 2011, '12? Memory?
Excuse me. I believe it passed in 11, '12, but became effective in 12, '13.
I think that's another important piece of consideration as we, we have this conversation, particularly with county funders, is that sales tax actually went to the voters with the understanding that it was to support cuts that were being made by the state of North Carolina, and it was actually never intended to supplant, but it was actually supposed to be extra funding. So what it did locally is exactly kind of supplant, that, that there's a bit of an artificial bump in our per pupil funding that, that has been that quarter cent sales tax. So, as we have conversations with, with the commissioners and the county manager going forward, I think it's important to, to remember that's what the voters supported when that was put to voters back in the day, but, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a helpful context. Thank you. So, I, so I would like to make a motion, if I could, and Mr. Lussor, do you have? Suspense is building here. That's, there we, that's, no, not it yet? Got a commercial break?
You have a note at the bottom.
Do you have, who has the?
Us ranked 25th in North Carolina. That's a good.
There we go. I'm sure our technology folks are up there saying, oh my God, it looked like Ms. Under's classroom all over again. So, so let me set a context for this request. I think it's important that we support the process by which the, the superintendent presented the, the initial budget. And so I've broken that part out. And then I think, because I think that was, even though it wasn't the budget that, that I want to see, that process was important. I want to support that process and send, signal to the county that we worked in, in the context of that agreement. I think we have a, an obligation to present a budget that also reflects the educational needs of our children. And so the second part of this motion addresses two parts of the, or two additional efforts. It does not do everything. There, there are many needs not addressed within this, but it does present a request for funds to retain school-level positions, with the understanding that that, those positions will be distributed within an equity formula within the district, and an appropriation to support the teacher retention initiatives as outlined. So, Mr. Chair, I would submit this as a motion.
Mr. Unruh has made a motion that this slide reflects our budget to the county.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Unruh, seconded by Mr. Kason. Board members, discussion.
Thank you for the 285 emails that we've received requesting full funding. I think that, I hope that those were copied also to county commissioners. Were they?
They will be.
They will be. Thank you very much. Because I think that the county needs to realize that taxpayers are asking for full funding. It's not coming out of left field. These are people that pay taxes. So we understand that taxes will be increased if, if, if funding is given to the public schools. And I want, I, when you talk about historical kind of thing, and I like the fact that we go back and look at history. See, three years ago, we talk about this slide that we've been on since three years. Well, three years ago, the board decided to not ask for what we needed, because we felt some sense of, you know, perhaps we had been wrong, we didn't do the right thing, and so we went to the county and said, we're not going to ask you for anything, we're going to just suffer. Well, you always know that you get what you ask for. So, so when we didn't ask three years ago, then they say, well, evidently, you don't need it. So, each year, it's been less and less we've been asking, and we're still asking for crumbs. You ask for crumbs, you get crumbs, okay? Low aim, low aim. So, when you're low aim, so that, that's, that's the board's, I think that's the board's fault. We've worked this budget to the bone. We already know it. Now, we, every year, we're talking about cut, 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 when everything, every time you go to the store, things aren't cut, they go higher and higher, all right? So, we're cutting, and everything else is going higher. We're saying, you know, cut administration, and everybody knows how to run schools. Everybody knows how to run the school. You know, it's just like everybody knows how to do hair and everybody, everybody knows how to run the school. So, yeah, cut the administration, that's where the fat is. All right, so you start cutting the people that lead you, then you don't have the people to lead. So, you know, that's, you cut your expertise. No, you don't cut the specialists. So we're not going to do that, you know? Trimming, but not cutting the specialists. You don't cut the physicians, the surgeons, okay? So, anyway. I'm in the position that we have to ask for what we need. We have to ask for what we need. I've, I've been looking at Seattle, their school district is same size as ours, then a $74 million deficit, they're going to the county, ask for money, Kings County. Guilford County, $706 million budget. They have about twice the number of kids, we have a little bit more than that. What is that, six times our budget, five times our budget? Guys. They have 77 schools, we have 56? 53? I, I mean, we have to look at what, what, what we're doing. Think about it. If they have, I think last year was a $619 million budget, they're asking for, proposing, I just went online, 706 million. We're asking for 132 million from the county. I think we have to ask for what it is we need to, to do what we think we need to do for our kids. And, and then let the county tell us, no, we won't get it. The $1.5 million that we asked for, for, for pre-K, the county just agreed that they, we should have universal pre-K. So that means they should fund it. We don't get funding for pre-K. We've done it because we believe in it, and as we expand it to meet the needs of our children, to come prepared to us, as we recognize from the pre-K universal, the universal pre-K task force, from the county commissioners, from everybody that's thinking that the earlier the child is ready, then the better they'll do in school. So we are trying to make sure that our three- and four-year-olds can come to a quality, have a quality pre-K experience. Somebody has to pay for it. So, 1.5 million, that, that should go back, the county should pay for that. What else do I have down here? Our fund balance is done. We, our, our accountants, our people that come to us and review our books, tell us that you cannot operate a district on a fund balance as low as ours. We need to have at least, I think it was 16 million or something like that, we need to have in fund balance. They've been telling us that for years. We had 19 million three years ago, now we're down to how much? 2.2.
2.2.
2.2 million dollars for 33,000 children, 4,500 employees, 2,500 teachers. The third largest employer in the city of Durham. That's ridiculous. We're the third largest employer in the city of Durham. We cannot operate on a shoestring budget. We cannot do quality, we cannot do quality service. And we can't bring the companies and the businesses into town for them to have their children go elsewhere, if we're, if, if, if we're going to be the city that is recognized as a brain, a city of, 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 you know, brain trust and all that. We can't, it cannot, it cannot happen. Thank you, darling. So, I, I'm, I'm going to have to vote no on, on a, a budget that doesn't restore teaching positions, a budget that doesn't look for a living wage for our people, that doesn't get bus drivers back to where they're supposed to be, because other, other people, you live in a household with somebody that works for the city, they make $15 an hour, and you don't make that, I mean, that, it doesn't make sense. The county is, the county employees make $15 an hour, our employees should make $15 an hour. That's what we said. So I, I, I'm not going to be able to vote for it, and, because I think we should go to the county and ask for what we need, and let them say, no, we can't do it, no, we won't do it.
May I ask for clarification? Ms. Fort Brown?
Yes, sir.
Is that, what you're saying no to is number one, which is the 3.5 ask?
Right, 3.5 ask, we need more than that.
And then the number two is, is a substantial increase to the, but you're not saying no to number two?
Oh, no, I'm not saying no to number two, no.
I want to make sure people.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's all one motion, just so we're clear.
But I think, but I think that when Ms. Fort Brown said she would vote no, I, I didn't want people to misunderstand that she was voting no for the whole, you know, for the whole.
We are, we are maintaining school-level positions, and I think that's great. Protecting the classroom is, is fine, but we got to protect the people that bring the children to the classroom.
I, I hear Ms. Fort Brown is saying that, that other $4 million that is on the other slide is what she's also advocating for.
So I also hear many wanting to continue this discussion, if I'm hearing her right, in how we might be appreciative of, of the incredible work that Mr. Unruh has done, both serving and facilitating the ZBBC work and, and all the detail that's brought today, but that as a board, we might continue to have a conversation to make sure that we feel that our ask to our progressive county commissioners is inclusive of what we need. Is that kind of what we're still talking about, many? Not that you're in a negative set of mind, but you, you're still, yeah.
Deferred needs.
Okay.
We, we have this deferred needs, and I think teacher compensation, extra duty, substitute pay, teacher recruitment, bus driver incentives, living wage, extracurricular funding, how do you, how do we defer those? I, I don't know how you, how we, how we justify deferring those, because we know that these things are substantial to making our district work. So, no, that's why I'm voting no. I mean, I'm one vote.
I don't think anybody's voting in any time we're, we're still actively in discussion, so I, I think it's still time to have thorough discussion of, of how we got here and where we go from here. So, don't just vote no. I want to understand fully about the instructional facilitators, because I've heard some talk of that, and I, are they still cut in this proposal with the 3.155? Is that?
If Mr. Unruh would allow me to interpret what we've been, for this motion, we would have the original 3.48 million ask, which, again, he outlined for the net of the growth, salary and benefit increases and the fixed costs. This option would include restoring the 24 teaching positions, restoring the assistant principal positions, and restoring the clerical months of employment, all being looked at under an equity formula across the district. It would also fund the next phase of the extracurricular pay at 1.6, parental leave at $700,000, and extra duty pay for teachers at $300,000. What is still on a deferred list at this point is the living wage at 2.3, bus driver incentives at $200,000, substitute costs at $1 million, and teacher recruitment at $500,000. We are prepared that if you want to work through anything, we have an interactive spreadsheet to add things as we go, but right now, this adds back, under Mr. Unruh's proposal, the options that maintain teacher retention, and then the restoring of the school-level positions.
Those school-level positions, and I wanted you to make sure that we discuss it, you know, or hear it. If we were to get the funding from the county, they would be restored according to our equity formulas and, and not necessarily the squeakiest wheel, if that makes any sense.
Yes, and, and this list does not include restoring the IFs.
And, and to be clear to, to folks that might have come to this budget process late, no one went to schools and said, cut your arts positions. No one would do that in Durham. I think that's some misinformation that's been shared. I also think there's misinformation within the community about previous budgets, about fund balances and PRC codes, and, and there is misinformation being shared widely. And that's, that's never helpful in, in a budgeting process. But we are confident that cuts have been made for years and years at central office, and if there were central office cuts that could protect schools, we would have, we would have dug even deeper into that. So I think there's a whole lot of misinformation out there that we will work to continue to combat in the coming weeks with our community. And I think it's, it's worthy of, of discussion of this full board, of, of how to build an ask that is entirely supportive of our schools and what they need, knowing that the Senate budget and the House budget are not likely to be friendly in any way going forward, so, and we have nowhere else to go other than the county.
So if I could restate Mr. Unruh's motion via this slide, I think it's easier to actually see the items. Mr. Unruh, correct me if I'm wrong, but your, your motion is to take the superintendent's budget, but add back the first items, the 3.5 million, or, no, am I, no, that was, sorry, that is a part of the superintendent's budget already. That's part of his, his ask.
At the top, right.
Yes, at the top. To add, in additional funding requests, the first set of options, the 3.1, to restore those positions, the second set of options, the teacher retention. The second set of options, the teacher retention. That's what the motion includes.
That's the motion.
Yep.
And where is witted in that? Because to me, it is critical that that is a set aside, as the county has already agreed to it, as we've signed letters with the county, that I want to be clear that.
Provide clarity on that. The witted request is part of our overall appropriation request, so the 1.5 is included as well. It's just for its own separate ask, so it's not part of our appropriation, so that it can be maintained for the purpose of pre-K funding.
And we will need to say that over and over again for the next month.
That is in the number that is in Mr. Unruh's motion?
No.
So you need to get a separate approval of that request?
Well, they've already made that request. That request has already gone to the county commissioners as a separate one-time funding request. So what we're finalizing to.
We had, we asked for the board to act on it early. And the request was sent over to the Board of County Commissioners. And the reason why it was sent over early, it was so that we could begin executing the plan for opening witted school on the first day of school, which includes hiring teachers and buying furniture and doing those kind of things, yes.
Yeah, I just want to, since I nearly mentioned, talking about how we got here in this budget process. Just want to focus on the word process again, as you've heard me do on many occasions. You know, I'm not, Steve and I are not yet one full year into this. And so every month is something new. I would love to have had the benefit of having done this many times, where we could look at the history and haven't gone through it and not just see it in paper, on paper. But I do know that we, having been DPS employee prior to this, know that teachers and programs have been protected through our fund balance and other areas. So grateful that we've been avoiding making cuts for years and appreciative of that. Where I have issues with the process is that, you know, I went back and looked at videos from things that we've discussed since we've actually fully talked about the upcoming budget. You know, we've gotten input about changes to the budget that we're in. I just would have loved to have had more discussion as a board in public about what we're about to vote on. And one area of that is, and this is why I asked why it had to be done so early. I think last time we talked about this, which was actually like March 9th, I think. Because I didn't feel at that point I had had a good sense of the success of the programs that we paid for this year. And I still don't know, you know, we're still, we're still going to get more reports in June particularly about some things that we have put in place this year that we still don't know yet whether they're working in that. And yet we're already deciding on how we're going to spend our money next year. So sometimes, in many areas, in doing the work that I feel like I need to be responsible for doing, I just feel the timing is just off. And so things are, the subject of that March night meeting was about uncertainties. Uncertainties from what the state was going to do, uncertainties from the numbers coming in, from parents who are leaving Durham Public Schools and so forth. And so I guess for me, the theme is clarity. And I wish I had a lot more clarity about the programs that we are going to continue under this budget. So I am looking forward to the next time around with the zero-based budget process that I hope we actually take on, where we look at programs and build our budget around the programs. But that's next year. So this year, I feel good about the motion that Steve made and that we are asking for more than the original ask and that we're moving in the right direction away from all these cuts. Kind of where I stand.
Thank you to the administration, Erin. Everyone has been working so hard on this budget. I know it's challenging. And I want to say again, thank you to the community for emailing us. Been lots of emails in our inbox, but it shows that people are showing up, right? And excited and wanting to engage in this. And that's what we need to make sure we get the money that we need to fund the schools that our students deserve, right? And so I am supportive of asking for exactly what we need. And if we need to ask, which is increasing, I think, what our original, the superintendent's original proposal is, because our students deserve it. We recognize that those deferred needs are some of the things that are helping, are aligning, forcing people to leave our district. And people are making decisions, I'm going to move to a different county because I'm not getting what I need here. I'm excited about next year too, as well, as another rookie on this team. And thinking about what the Zero Base Budget Committee is going to be working on to help us improve this process and evaluate. But I think we can't wait for the future to be like, oh, now we know we need more teaching positions. We need those now. And we know that our students and our schools need that now.
Don't forget about your classified staff.
Right, and our classified staff.
Don't forget about your classified staff. And I want us to be very clear. When we speak about teachers, we have to speak about the whole family. We have to speak about our whole family. So our bus drivers, teacher recruitment is extremely, extremely crucial to the district because you've got to make sure, when you look at the turnover that we had, we've got to make sure that we're constantly getting the best teachers, the most committed teachers, the most energetic and qualified teachers in this, in this school district. And don't forget about the money. Living wage. We've got to pay people a living wage. So I'm, I'm still in the place where I was. Ask for, ask for everything.
So would it be appropriate to ask the maker of the original motion if he would welcome an amendment to support that ask? And then the, with the addition of the living wage and bus driver incentives, subpay and teacher recruitment items?
I will respond to that a couple of ways. I'm very committed to paying our employees, all of our employees, a living wage. I would like to remind the board that we have an agreement with the county commission to study what exactly that means. That there's disagreement about how, not disagreement, but there are differences between how we pay our employees and how the county pays their employees and how the city pays their employees. And we have committed to a process of studying that and together with the county, making a proposal in the next budget that brings alignment to those pay levels. I think it's fair to say that, at this point, the, we can't say that we're not paying at the same level as, as the county and city because of the differences in benefits and so on. So I'm fully committed to moving in the direction of increasing pay. However, the reason I did not put it in my own motion is because we've already made an agreement with the county to look at that. And I think that we should do that, that study, and then come back to it and make that proposal together with the county. I think it would be a stronger proposal and have a greater chance of being supported. The reason for not putting the other items in there were mostly to just try to make a point that, you know, when we say we should ask for everything we need, that the list of deferred needs is a very small part of what, of what we need. And we have not had a discussion about how those fit in the context of overall needs in Durham. The, that's a list that's fairly arbitrary. The Durham Association of Educators has been active in promoting, and I'm in total agreement with the idea that we should be moving towards, at minimum, an average level of funding for our school system. And if we did that, then we would be looking at more teachers, which I would put above these other requests myself, and a number of other school-level needs that are very important. So I think that to just take that list and say, ask for everything we need, and then use that as our level of need, to me, I'm not in support of that. I think that we need to continue to develop and advocate for greater funding. I believe that this request identifies the two of many important needs. It identifies the two most important needs, the school-level positions and the teacher retention initiatives. I also think that the, that that level is a very defensible level of additional funding. And so I personally would choose to, I would prefer to leave the motion as is and have a vote on it. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll just give my opinion, and then we'll see where we are if we, if we take a vote or if we have more discussion. I'll try to be brief and not repeat. The, to me, the work of the Zero Base Budget Committee cannot be overlooked because that, and we need to say it at every chance we get, that is a two-year process to reform our budget significantly, to make it a needs-based budget. It's something that I'm proud that we advocated for. I'm very proud of the work that the committee has done. And it's not easy work. And I attended a few of those, and I know it's not easy work, but it's very important work. So for me, the next budget cycle is pretty critical and we'll much better speak to what our needs are. So saying what you said, Steve, in a different way. I just said I wasn't going to repeat, and now I'm repeating. You know, to Xavier's point, for me, program evaluation is a big piece. And I think it's been missing in many of the presentations that we get. The superintendent has alluded to providing contract names and numbers earlier, perhaps in June. I would actually like to see that shift even earlier so that when we're talking about a budget, we're actually talking about individual large contracts, and we have a program evaluation to go with it. We could name any number of them, but for me, that's been a missing piece. And that's why I'm not super confident that, that we are everywhere we need to be in the superintendent's budget. That's my opinion. As Mr. Unruh was talking, the, one of the deferred needs that sticks out to me, having served on the operations committee for more than a year, we get 1.4, 1.5 million dollars from the county to take care of our stuff, wallpaper, paint, carpet. And a more realistic number for what that would actually cost is somewhere in the neighborhood of 5 million. And that's something we kind of fell asleep on a little bit this year. We had talked about bringing together the county and the district to talk about what that should actually look like, so we can get a hard number that's in the annual appropriation from the county. So we're not using bonds, we're not putting it on the credit card to take care of our stuff. So that's a deferred need that I hope the zero-based work will kind of help identify and prioritize. And then I do feel good about asking for what I count up to be 9.2 million dollars, a 9.2 million dollar request from the county. The 3.5, the 3.1, and the 6.2. And I think it is more than defensible. You know, I think rocks can be thrown in each direction, but, you know, I wonder about the county's fund balance versus our fund balance. I wonder about the office building I see going up that was put on bonds that did not go before the voters. So I wonder about our counterparts at the county and how they're allocating resources that best support the needs of our students. So as the motion stands, I can support a 9.2 million dollar additional funding ask from the county and be proud that that gets us very close to a no-cuts budget from comparing dollars to dollars. Though I will note, it doesn't count for inflation.
I could provide one point of clarification, as hopefully you pay me to do. We're very grateful to get any additional funding, but we've reiterated over the last two years the importance of understanding when it comes into form with new money, even though we're designated for these options we're listing, our charters will walk away with 18%. So of the 5.7 you're adding to the superintendent request, the charters will walk away with just over a million dollars of that portion of the new money increase.
Thank you. I was, I had agreed to bring that up and neglected to, so thank you for bringing that up.
So Matt, with yours, what, can you tell, what, the first two, you're agreeing to this part right here? Right.
Yes, I think if we have that other slide, those three categories of asks add up to about 9.2 million dollars.
Yeah, I think we need to be clear what we're talking about. So, and I want to understand what you're saying. Are you, is your support for Mr. Unruh's motion as it stands, without adding any discussion of living wage and other substitute pay, that kind of thing? Are you getting 9 point, you're just saying 9.2 million.
Paul, if you could pull up Steve's original.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the slide. Two more down, I think.
Yeah, one, blah, blah, blah.
One backup.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I'm looking at, thanks.
Yeah, so as I understand Mr. Unruh's motion, adding back the 3.1 under the options, adding back our school-based personnel, adding the teacher retention, and adding the superintendent's already documented ask, those first three big categories. I did teach math, but I could be wrong, 9.2-ish million dollars.
What's the 9 point, okay, the 9.75 at the bottom, Mr. Unruh, is that, is that, that is totaling everything else that is not in the superintendent's request?
Where are you looking now?
The very bottom line.
The very bottom are the, yes, everything not counting the superintendent's proposal. So I think what, I think what, I think Matt is speaking in favor of the motion.
I am.
Only increasing the bus driver incentives by 200,000. I don't think you're going to be able to look at these bus drivers in the face if we don't look at that. I mean, I just want you all to think about that. These are the people that take your children to school. They're up at 4 o'clock in the morning, bringing children to school, making sure that they're safe. They're behind them. 200,000? I believe you better put it in that budget.
So this is what I meant when I say process, like where did that number come from? That number came from?
Great question. Again, putting a deferred list together originally that didn't have financial part with it, in conversation with transportation. This is a small version of a model to incent bus drivers that have good attendance, good driving records, to put some things in place. It doesn't allocate additional compensation because their compensation was being included in the living wage. This was a small amount from proposals that were seen in other places that pay people that come to work the majority of the 180 days, drive safely without any accidents. And that was, that's what the 200,000 incentive figure represents. But the living wage would adjust all classified wages to the 500,000.
We have teacher extra duty pay. Is that correct? I mean, isn't that an incentive? Teacher extra duty pay? I put it in the same, as a teacher, I would put that in the same thing. If I take care of the yearbook, then you're not getting incentive for that. That's extra duty, correct? Okay.
That would be extracurricular, but yes.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, we do have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
I feel like we're, we're concerned about the same issues. And we're just hoping, I'm still hoping that we might dream a little bigger on, so if we could set aside the living wage conversation. But we know that bus driver incentives, as many said, are important. Subpay and we struggling and set a goal for a better teacher recruitment and retention. So maybe we could set the 2.3 aside and consider adding some of the other. I mean, I, we're going to need a strong conversation. I mean, I, we're going to need a strong conversation with our county to even get anywhere close to anything that we're asking for. So, I mean, why not fully bring the needs that we have and let our community help us advocate for them? We have new commissioners, we have progressive commissioners, we had reevaluation of property tax last year and this is the year for them to really take the lead with us. So, I'd still be interested in seeing if there are other items that we could put in. I don't want to vote against your motion, it's a strong first step. I just want to make it as strong as we can.
From a process point of view, if people want to move to amend the motion, that would normally be how you'd proceed. In other words, if people want to add or take away or whatever, that's, wouldn't be the usual.
I tried a friendly amendment, I could do another friendly amendment, I'm just trying to.
There's no such thing as a friendly amendment.
Not friendly?
No.
I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's friendly.
From the point, I'm sure it's friendly, but from the point of view of parliamentary law, either somebody seconds the amendment and it passes or it doesn't, it doesn't matter whether the maker of the motion approves of it or not.
So, in the aspect of friendliness, we, again, I'm new to this. We don't do a good job of voting on what we, we will sit on a motion for a long time. So, let me ask Steve, when Nellie originally talked about possibly amending the motion, and I know that she could just do it on her own, she's being friendly. Right, right. What is your thoughts about, thoughts about taking the living wage part out but putting in the other three parts? Do you feel the same? Because some of that we really haven't discussed in the ways that I would like to see us have discussed, but what is your thoughts on that?
So, my thoughts exactly as you're saying, Xavier, I just, I'm trying not, I'm trying to kind of stay calm. I really do not like the idea that, the implication that I'm not in support of bus drivers, that I'm not in support of a living wage. As I said earlier, you know, I could walk out and come back in 15 minutes with a list of another 20 million dollars, all of which are needs, all of which are just as needed as what was on there. The only reason those are listed on there is because they were things that we asked the administration to do a minimal amount of work. But those are not fully developed proposals, which is the reason why I did not include them. The, what we have in there, they're clear, we know what they are, we've discussed them, we've supported them. I think that we are going to have to fight very hard with our community for the funding of, at the level that we have, that I've put into that motion. I think that, I just don't support adding everything we think of to that, even though they're, each of those is very important. So, you know, the way the process works, the members of the board are welcome to suggest amendments, but my personal preference is to vote for this motion. Friendly, in a friendly way.
And I think you all bring up good questions and points about the process and like we could have a really long list of needs on this list. And so, I think I'm, we can, I would support this motion with knowing that we're going to be thinking about these needs and developing the right way to support them and do it in a way that's actually going to be best for our district, thinking about evaluating these needs. So, when we have our budget next year, they may not feel like arbitrary proposals, but proposals that we have fully fledged out what we're, what money we need for.
So, kind of interesting that the old timers here, Minnie, you and I, are like here hoping to encourage us. There's nothing that's not fully fledged about the needs that are presented here. And it's a little bit arbitrary to pick extra-duty pay for teachers, but we know that is, that is a recurring need and something that, you know. So, all of these, to me, are equally important to students and equally important to continuing the conversation with our commissioners. So, I'm, I'm still appreciative of the work, but hoping that we might dream just a little bit bigger in this moment. I don't know, Minnie, I feel.
Well, I'm with you, Natalie. You know, we all sit in our own seats, you know, everybody, everybody here is a teacher except a few of us. So, extra-duty pay, we understand that. But I'm the daughter of a custodian, so I understand that. And I understand how hard people work. And I understand that the loaf of bread costs the same for a teacher as it costs for a custodian. And so, when we get a cost of living raise and bonuses and incentives, many times, other people don't. Eight hours is eight hours, whether you're riding a bus or whether you're teaching. So, sometimes we, you know, we put things in a certain level and I just, I just want us to, and I understand, everybody here loves everybody and we're all friendly and that kind of thing, but when we start talking about delving out the, you know, slicing up the pie, we've got to make sure that people who are committed and loyal and working hard in their positions also get a nice slice of it. And so, I think you get what you ask for and you certainly won't get any more than you ask for. Now, that's for certain, you know. You may not, you may not get what you ask for, but you won't get any more than what you ask for. So, they're not going to be more generous to us because we ask for less. We already seen that. So, I think that when you have a community that rallies behind you that says, let's work for this. Steve Schuh, when he was on the school board, that was in 2004, said, "Let's dream big." Find out what do we need to make the district excellent? That was in 2004. And we were scared to say what it was we really needed. We don't want to say, I don't want to say, I don't want to go that far. It's time for us to stop being timid. If not now, when? Ask for it and all they can say is no. So, it's not going to be, I don't want to ask for it, ask for it. So, we're teaching children to ask for what they want. We've got young ladies stood up here and told us she needed a creative studies class. She didn't say, "Well, if you could just, you know what." We're not going to mealy-mouth this. So, I know, I'm not in favor. I want to ask for what it is we need, if living wage, we're going to study. That's what Durham does. We study, 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 study. When are we going to do, 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 do?
In the spirit of friendship, would Ms. Byer or Ms. Fort Brown like to make a motion to amend Mr. Unruh's motion?
In the spirit of love and friendship and the 33,000 brilliant minds in Durham Public Schools, the 4,500 employees, the 2,500 teachers, the 101 languages being spoken. I suggest a motion that ask for the request in the original budget that includes living wage, includes substitute pay, includes bus driver incentives, includes extracurricular funding, all of those deferred needs as we have identified them at this moment.
Mr. LeSueur, would you put Mr. Unruh's slide back up, please? Thank you. No.
No, not the slide of the motion. The slide that has all those things, those first two categories and then we left off the other ones.
So, Ms. Fort Brown, if I can interpret your motion, you wish to amend Mr. Unruh's motion to add the categories near the bottom, living wage, bus driver incentives, increasing substitute teacher pay, teacher recruitment.
Exactly. And I think that would come up, you said nine, that would come up to the 13 million. That I think that was the original ask that we, the superintendent came. When we looked at that budget, it was a 13 million dollar ask.
I'm not sure about that, but that is what you're asking for.
But if it's nine and four.
You're asking for everything on the page. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Fort Brown, seconded by Ms. Byer, that we amend Mr. Unruh's motion to add the four categories, living wage, bus driver incentives, increased substitute pay, teacher recruitment to, to the asks outlined in Mr. Unruh's motion. Is there any discussion?
There is clarification from staff and I greatly apologize, but I just think we have to, again, all recognize that our ask for specific amounts subtracted by the 18%, we just need clarification from staff that we're paying the charters and we want to ask for what you need. But having these dollar amounts specified like this, every time we get a new appropriation, we have to, what I want to, just clarification is, want us to adjust for the charter school increase or expect us to make additional cuts to make up for almost 2 million dollars that'll come out of a 9 million dollar plus ask. Have to be clear, so when we balance.
I don't, actually, I think the charter school is already out of the superintendent's proposal, so it would be, at least in my motion, it would be, 1 million would go to the charters.
Right, but if we add these others, right, correct.
Then you still have, so whatever money, it's clear, whatever money we get, the charters are going to get part of it. They have a set fee. So, if you ask for 13, they'll get one, what is it, 1.8%?
18.
18% of it, okay? So, that means, well, what that means really is if you wanted 13, then you'd ask for 18% more.
Correct.
Do, do.
My math.
Yeah, and then they get 18% of it, that's correct.
Ms. Fort Brown, do you want that in your motion?
Not necessarily. I want, I think we can work with the 13. I want us to include what's there. But I like the 18, going over 18%, I like that, to actually get to 13.
Maybe that's something that ZBBC can help calculate into future budget projections, I mean, and future asks, because that needs to be understood.
Yes, if you ask, you need it, get it.
Okay, it has been moved by Ms. Fort Brown, seconded by Ms. Byer, that we amend the original motion by Mr. Unruh. Any further discussion? We're voting only on amending the motion. All in favor of amending the motion to include an additional 4 million dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Two. All those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Four, the motion fails. We still have a motion on the floor to adopt Mr. Unruh's proposal, our proposal. Any further discussion on that motion?
Yeah, my discussion is that I'm reluctant to be a divided board going to the community and the county. But I think we just missed an opportunity to, and so, this is why I'm trying to keep the conversation and the discussion going. I think we're missing an opportunity to highlight these needs and have important conversations with our county's funders about equity for our staff and really profound needs if we don't bring them forward in a budget ask. And so, I think we're, I think we're missing an opportunity. So, I would move that we amend Mr. Unruh's motion to include everything but living wage. So, bus driver incentives, increasing substitute pay, and teacher recruitment. I would make that motion at this time.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer that we add bus driver incentives, increasing substitute pay, teacher recruitment to Mr. Unruh's motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Ms. Fort Brown, second. Is there discussion or clarification from the administration? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. And we have an abstention. We have, we had three, she said nay. So, we have a split vote. I've never seen a split vote.
Motion fails, you have to have a majority.
Motion fails.
So, I think, I agree, this is an important conversation to have about these needs. Matt brought up, Mr. Sears brought up building needs, right? And we've also had many people come in and talk about that. We've talked to teachers about that. So, part of me wonders like if we're going to do this and we need to put a whole lot more needs on this list and I don't know if that is in the best interest of us right now, in this moment. So, we could add buildings up here, we could add all the other kind of needs that we have. And I don't know if that's actually going to help us move forward without a better process. And so, I think I'm, my tension is between those things.
So, here's where I'll just implore again. Minnie's been at this a long time, I've not been at it as long. It always feels backwards, it always feels rushed, it always feels there's not enough supporting documentation, it always feels like, wow, how did we get here? And part of the reason is the state hasn't even passed their budget yet. So, we are really out of order, flip-flopped from what we're going to do. We probably won't know till August, September, maybe, what the General Assembly and the governor sign. So, all of this is a bit preliminary, but this is also a time for this board to be visionary. And I would just implore us to consider this fantastic motion that is on the floor and kind of got stuck. And I'd make it again if I could implore you to consider it in a different way. I don't know, Minnie, you got anything else? I'm just running out of juice.
I just, you know, I don't know why we are afraid to be bold. You think they're going to look kindly on asking for nine? You think you have a better chance to get nine? I don't, I don't understand it. I don't understand it. It's like going to the store and asking for, you know, well, lamb chops or, you know. Anyway, you all know what kind of analogies I'm making. I mean, just common, very common sense kind of analogies. And I mean, you know, we say we don't know all the needs, well, you haven't analyzed all the needs, we haven't done, we haven't done a thorough job of seeing what it is the school, what we really should ask for. So, we put these things up here and we think we might be, they might be more meanable to doing this and they're going to study living wage. They know what they're paying, $15 an hour. The city gave their employees a $1,000 raise. The county gave their employees a $1,000 raise. We couldn't do that. Same people, we're the third largest employer in the city. We couldn't do that. We gave our people $200. I just, I just, and then we dilly-dally. I just don't, if we aren't going to be bold, then just say who we are. We just ask for what we think we can get.
I don't really look to prolong this, but I do feel, I think that I have a very different understanding of what our responsibility is as we build a budget. And I don't, I don't agree that it's bold or visionary to simply list everything we need. As Ms. Umstead said, we could have a much longer list than this and I would, and I would fully support that. I will say, as I said before, we are going to have to fight very hard and it would be a tremendous victory if we reached the request that we're asking for in my motion. That would involve a substantial tax increase in Durham. I believe that citizens in Durham will support that. I don't think that they have yet seen what that would look like. I do think that it is our responsibility to make hard choices between competing all good I do think that, that it is our responsibility to make hard choices between competing all good options. And I will simply say one more time, I, I am, I resent the implication that I'm not in favor of these because I'm not just slapping it on top of a budget request. If members of the board want to make a serious effort to address these needs, then I would invite them to bring us a, a proposal for how to move forward on those within the context of the budget. But to me, I, I don't consider it bold, I don't consider it visionary to simply keep adding things to a, a list. I think that's, to me, that's not a responsible approach to a budget. I think that the process, I, I think our process for getting to the, the request that we submitted was as good as we're going to get this year, and I would still, I'll be in favor of it.
And I'm not calling you out. I know you're taking this personally. You keep saying my proposal. It's not, this is the school district's proposal. You happen to be one of the ones who sat on the Zero Budget Committee, and I think that's great. But when we're talking about what we're doing for students, it's not personal. It's not personal. So I'm not, I'm not attacking you, Steve, and, and the, and the long hours that you all put in in coming up with these figures. But I'm looking at the other figures that you have, and I think they're great too. And I'm just saying, go for it. So I'm not saying, no, I'm not on the budget committee. But I think, I think you've done a masterful job. But I'd like to see us ask for everything that you have there, that you have so adequately and judiciously gone through and done. That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that some clarification to my support for the amended motion was that, for me particularly, the teacher recruitment and the subpay are very much aligned to what we, to our goals as a board. I mean, we came here during a retreat and we talked about what our goals were and the things we felt were very important at that time. And the things we've asked the administration to kind of go back and go back and look at and look at. And those line up very well with those, with the work we've done this year. So that's, that was my rationale for supporting the amended motion.
Yeah, I would just repeat that, that the one that Bettina referenced and I referenced earlier, this, this notion of keeping up our buildings, like how, we, we have not, we have not made the full list, and that is a problem for me. Where does it rank that we have humidity issues in two of our high schools? Where does it rank that we have carpet that's falling apart or ceiling tiles? How do we consider the positives that have been done with lighting around the district? The, we have $1.3 million for upkeep from the county because it wasn't fully cut during the recession. My understanding, it was 2.6. And they said, well, we got a fine dollar, so we're going to cut it down to 1.3. I, I could be wrong. I think I heard that about a year ago. Is that your recollection?
So my recollection is that's bond, I mean, that's, that's, what's the thing I hate? The lottery. I think that's lottery money that goes through the county and they hold on to 1.5 million of it for us and we trickle a little bit of it left and use those for those projects. So that's my recollection of the money you're talking about. But the county already holds on to a big piece of it for bond service reduction.
Right, right, but the, that service, the, the point is that in working with our administration, the number is likely closer to five. But again, we haven't, we haven't studied, studied that. And, and because it's not in a ranked priority by this board on this sheet, I, I will stand by the, the motion that was made because despite not yelling about every piece of it, some thought has gone into the, the responsibility we have.
So I will say, to me, Matt, if we're going to talk about facilities needs, which are a separate category, that again goes to this same notion, and you remember the, the discussions we had with the commissioners about the bond, about the needs being much greater than they were able and willing to step up for us for. So that's, to me, where that money should be allocated. It, it would, it would be in a recurring capital stream. That's why a lot of that work got deferred. But it, it even speaks more to just, I think our community is encouraging us to be advocates. And we were advocating for the capital needs when we brought the bond needs and brought those. And we got about half of it. I don't know what we're going to get with this ask. I know we told them in March that we thought we needed the superintendent's 5 million and we told them we needed another 8.3. So I know, they already know, there is a big ask coming. Ask, I'm sorry. It sounded different, coming out. So I would, I would restate the motion that we support the original motion with the addition of, of bus driver incentives, increasing substitute pay, and teacher recruitment funds. I would make that motion again. Can I make another motion already? That, and I wish that Mr. Lee was here so that we weren't at a, at a tie, because that's never where any board wants to be.
Well, I can't make a parliamentary ruling, but the normal rule is that if you voted on something one time, you can't vote on it again in the same meeting unless there is a motion from the other side to reconsider.
The side, it's, it's always funny to me that in a tie, it becomes a no. What's that Roberts Rule? Because I always.
It takes a majority to adopt a motion, so 50/50 doesn't count as a majority.
So I need to move, we can move to reconsider the motion?
Someone who voted against the earlier motion could move that the board reconsider the earlier motion? Let's vote on the earlier motion.
The motion was to, Ms. Byer made a motion, Ms. Byer was hoping to make a motion to include, but, but she, no, 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 sorry, this, this time around. She's hoping to have the same motion around everything but living wage and the extra category. She needs either Mr. Unruh, Ms. Amstead, or myself to reconsider that.
So I will say one thing that occurs to me is that the other reason I like adding this in, and I think this goes to some of Minnie's thoughts, is it actually covers a broader range of our employees. It makes sure to cover some folks that are in classified roles. And, and that, that I think is, is a more inclusive ask. Yeah.
I don't hear a reconsideration. Is there further discussion on the original motion?
I do have a question for Mr. Bowyer. Coming out of this meeting without a budget that has been voted on to ready to pass to the county puts us where? In the timeline?
Great clarifying question. By statute, we are required to bring a board's budget to the county commissioners by May 15th.
Is there further discussion? Would you put the motion back up on the screen for us?
Okay, well, you want me to amend it again? Can I drop things out? Does it still count?
If it's different, I think that's correct. Never mind. Leave it up there.
With, with, with full appreciation for the visionary work that has brought us to Mr. Unruh's motion, I would ask that we amend that motion to include, gosh, which one do we want to include? All of it. Increase, a million for increasing substitute pay, because we know that is a critical need. And $200,000 in, in incentives for bus drivers. That's a different motion.
I would, so the normal procedure for dealing with the situation in which you have a number of items, rather than potentially pursuing all the possible variations of four different items being added or not, you would vote on them, divide them into a series and vote on them separately, and it's either up or down on either one, and that's kind of it when you finish with either one, if that's what you chose to do.
Would you like to do that, Ms. Byer? We'd do a series of motions on each one, if there's a second for each one.
I, I'm happy to do whatever the attorney advises, yeah.
Is there a second to Ms. Byer?
Which is.
So I think it would be, if, if somebody wanted to pursue each item on that list, then you might move to amend Mr. Unruh's motion to add living wage, see if you get a second, then vote. And then if that passes or not, that is what it is, then you might go to bus driver incentives and so on and so forth, rather than doing all four or combinations, different combinations of all four, which could, thank you.
This is the first time we've ever had this much energy or discussion over a budget. With, generally, the gallery is empty and we can come in here and just approve a budget. So this is interesting. This is 2017. We've never had this kind of discussion. So I'm happy.
So, and I, and I do want to go back to that March 9th meeting in which we talked about uncertainties. And the subject came up that one reason we haven't been here is because we haven't been losing students year after year after year. And of course, that discussion went into something totally different about marketing. We spent an hour on that. And a great way to plug was happening on Saturday. Which school is it? The, at Lucas? And the timeframe is 8:30 to 10:30. Champions for our northern schools, yay. Anyway, we, in my opinion, we haven't, we haven't been here because we haven't been taking those losses financially. Because when a student leaves our district, that money goes to.
Any further discussion or motions? What I heard Mr., what I heard Mr. Sue saying is if you'd like to make a motion, starting with living wage, if you'd like to make a motion for living wage, and there's a second, we can vote that up or down, and we can make those motions one by one.
Well, we could entertain you, your original motion again.
Well, I think people would have to reconsider, I would need some reconsideration from one of the no votes, I think.
There have to be a motion in a second to reconsider. And then that, the issue of whether to reconsider that motion would, again, have to pass by a majority.
We could move to reconsider your, I could move to reconsider, I could move to reconsider your original.
The second also have to come from someone who voted against?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I don't think so.
I, I'm, if it gets us out of this room at some point, I will second it so we can vote. I do think, you know, we can do this all night.
We can.
But there's a fundamental issue about how to present a budget. And it would be, you know, I, I think it would just be helpful to, you know, kind of clarify. And maybe, maybe this vote can clarify, are we going to have the, the budget proposal as, as presented? Or are we going to add things arbitrarily, I would call arbitrarily, to, to the budget? All of which are necessary, all of which are great. But, you know, I, I would, to me, if we can just go ahead and, and kind of see this vote to clarify that issue, that would be great.
We can do that, and we can vote on the original motion. And if it does not have four votes, it will fail. And we will.
And we could, somebody can come up with a different motion.
Correct. So are we going forward with the reconsideration to add?
You have a motion in a second.
We do, okay. It's a move by Ms. Amstead, seconded by Mr. Unruh, to reconsider one of Natalie's motions. I don't know which one. Everything but the living wage.
I think it's everything but living wage, yeah.
Everything, not conditional. Everything but the living wage is the reconsideration. Okay.
And the other option is to go through this list, right?
Well, there are infinite, you have, you have a motion in a second on the floor here to deal with that.
Okay, so the, what we're voting on is, should we reconsider? It needs four votes to pass. Should we reconsider Ms. Byer's motion? All in favor of reconsidering Ms. Byer's motion, say aye.
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 For ayes, against, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now that motion is back on the floor.
Okay, Ms. Byer's motion is back on the floor. Does she have to restate it or can we vote on it?
You are supposed to restate it.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Byer that we add to the original motion the addition of bus driver incentives, increase for substitute teacher pay, and teacher recruitment to Mr. Unruh's motion. I hate to ask, is there any discussion? All in favor of adding those three items to Mr. Unruh's motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Amstead, I didn't hear if you voted or not. You're for? Okay, that motion passes. There were four votes to two.
Now the amended motion is before the board.
Right. There were four votes to, to add bus drivers' subpay and teacher recruitment to Mr. Unruh's original motion. So that is now a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none. I'm going to restate it just for clarity. I might even try to add it up. The motion on the floor is to add to the budget request.
Oh, you want to pull up your interactive spreadsheet?
No, no, it's okay. Leave it here, please. Leave it here, please. The, the 3.15, 3.155 million to put back teacher positions. The teacher retention section, 2.6 million. The bus driver increase substitute teacher pay, teacher recruitment, as well as the superintendent's increases. And if I, if I use the numbers at the bottom, that looks like 2.3, 1.1, looks like $10.8 million. Everything but the living wage is on that sheet, is on the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, 4-2. The budget we will present to the county commission will include what we have just outlined. And I am going to call for a five-minute break, so that anyone who needs to use the restroom may do so, or whatever else.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm calling us back to order. Which ones are we cutting? The chair can make a motion, right? It's technically not, typically not done. Anybody can make a motion.
The chair does not make a motion.
Does not make a motion. Okay. The administration would like to remove, amend the agenda to remove 7B. I'm not making a motion.
But you could say if the board consents, can we remove the following items?
Does the board consent to remove items 7B and 9A per the administration's recommendation?
Yes.
Custodial and PLC.
And that would be for consideration at an upcoming meeting.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Dr. Wilson Norman would like to make sure that we have full opportunity to have a thorough discussion. And it will be at the academic services work session.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, we'll...
There may be public comment. Sorry. Item 7A is lighting. And we do have public comment. There is one person signed up, Brian Callaway.
I'll try to be quick here. As exciting as all these lighting projects have been to me, to y'all, and especially our schools, I feel the need to make you aware of some of the dynamics that are hindering even more progress. I've been working in or for local government for long enough to become rather skilled at jumping through the hoops of bureaucracy. But I have not yet learned how to jump through brick walls. And I've encountered more here than anywhere else. Part of the reform I spoke about hours ago includes a realignment of how we conduct business. Cultural delay is not just present in our central services. I've been told by multiple leaders that administration has actually instructed directors on how to use the art of delay. Delay is the last thing this district needs. I feel like I've been doing triage on our buildings since I've arrived. And I've seen time and time again, administration deciding to hold on to capital funds rather than investing in the needs that are so apparent in some of our buildings. If this was the first time this has happened, I wouldn't be here speaking to you. If this was the 10th time, I still may try to persevere and not feel the need to mention it. But this cultural delay is so pervasive, I believe it demands attention. It deprives our students and teachers, it burdens our maintenance staff, it degradingly turns our school leaders into beggars, and it shortchanges our taxpayers. We are still in the process of spending bond funds from 2007. And when the board approved the purchase of LED lights at your March monthly meeting, good news there is that was the first board approval of the 2016 bonds. And this rebid of the lighting project on the agenda now is the last piece of a 14-school LED project that I'm really excited about. And even if we factor in a large contingency for these projects, we're still left with over $550,000 in the bond funding that was earmarked for lighting projects. I have plenty of additional projects in the hopper that I would love to pursue. I have an incredibly cost-effective proposal right here from Duke Energy, from an incentive program. Remember, I like that coupon cutting. I cannot figure out a way to do a lighting project at Bacon Street for any cheaper than what Duke Energy right now is offering us through over $100,000 in incentives. That facility has original lighting in it from the 1950s. And four directors support it. But administration has so far denied the project. I'm told there will be no new lighting projects. But our community deserves to know that there is budget available. Our bond declared that we'd be spending about 1.8 million on LEDs. And those, again, reduce operating costs. And the board is the only body that can approve adding projects to the bond program. But my requests to have that conversation with you have been repeatedly denied and delayed. I took this job to make a difference in our schools. I took this job to serve our community. And it pains me to see progress delayed.
Thank you. Mr. Bullier?
Thank you. The next item on your agenda is the bids for the light upgrade installation at Hillside. This was on your previous agenda, and it was pulled at the recommendation of legal. So it's back before you today. I'd refer to John Long to give any explanation and the pricing of this.
Okay. Sorry. As you're aware, at the last meeting where we approved installation bids, we approved 13 to 14 schools to get us below the dollar level. We put Hillside back on the street. And we received two bids for that. They're higher than they were before. But I think it's actually reflective of how good of numbers we got the first time. We also increased the scope of lighting within that project by adding about 300 additional fixture install for that. So we feel really good about the numbers overall. What that ends up with is with contingency set aside, we're spending about 1 point, almost 1.2 million out of the 1.783606 that was applied for that work. And will leave us between $600,000 and $700,000, I think, when we get done, depending on how much of the contingency we use. So we received two bids. It's 100% minority participation. Diversified Electrical Technologies of Royal Hall was the low bidder. And their bid is $177,700. And we recommend award to Diversified Technologies for that amount.
Questions, discussion, or motions?
Move approval of the bid for lighting upgrade installation at Hillside.
Second. The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Kason, that we approve the bid for lighting. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Doing the lighting, we had a, and I'm sure Mr. Kason can attest to this, it was pitch black almost in there when you're trying to have an affair. And so we're glad to know that we're going to be able to light up half of them. Thank you.
Apologies, Ms. Fort Brown.
That's all right, dear.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Item 7C.
Bring to you bids for 1817 Hamlin Road roof replacement. And again, Mr. John Long will explain the detail of that.
Thank you. As you know, there's more than 12 roofs in the bond. 1817 we're having continued trouble with. It is a warehouse building out at Hamlin Road. We received six bids for that. It's a full roof replacement. The low bid was $606,824, including alternate number one. It's within the budget. And it has 10% minority participation. Triad Roofing of Winston Salem was the low bidder. And so it's a recommendation of ours to award to Triad Roofing for $606,824, including alternate number one.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Discussion? I have a clarifying question. If we do have any leftover bonds from the seven, or what was the other one, 13, why are we spending $16 bonds, 2016 bonds?
This is part of the project that was for that. Leftover monies now are basically all earmarked for waiting to pay the bills. There are, if you recall, we did with the controls projects, go back and add for deficiency list of equipment we were finding along the way that needed to be replaced because it wasn't working when we hooked the controls to it. We've been extending out time to allow them to make those things so that we leave a school with not only the controls working, but the equipment upstream or downstream of that. It might be, you know, actuators, fan motors, things like that, which take time to do at the end of the job. So that's pushed us out in a little bit of time. I could explain all that at another time, but...
Sure.
So it would be helpful to clarify, and for the public that's listening, 2007 bonds included a high school that was proposed for Durham that, working in conjunction with our county commissioners, was determined that we did not need, which left us with that bond package of about $40 million that we used nine million of for technology. And the rest was broken into small projects, all of which will be closed by the end of this calendar year. Is that, am I getting that accurate?
Faster than that, I hope. I am working day and night to make sure we get those closed out.
I appreciate that. I know that managing 28 small projects has been important, but also tedious for our staff.
Spending to the, when you're talking millions, spending to the penny is tough to do. I mean, it's like Brewster's Millions sometimes. You close something out, and you get allowances back. So we're trying to continue to, and spend it well. Everything we do, every decision we make, we're trying to spend it well.
I want to be clear that y'all have been incredibly responsible with that money. And that's been in conjunction with our county commissioners and county managers.
Ms. Byer, I think that's really the correct word, is that being responsible with the money and good custodians of the money and make sure that it's spout wisely, on time, for projects that are absolutely needed. Thank you.
With that being said, I would move that we accept the bid for the 1817 Hamlin Road roof replacement.
The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Fort Brown, that we approve the roof replacement on the agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item is the 2017-18 meal prices and school nutrition services budget update. I'm going to refer that to Jim Keaton.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. The item on the agenda is the meal price and school nutrition budget. You probably have the prices in front of you. Federal regulations as of 2011 require that the gap we receive for reimbursement from the student meals from the free price amount and the paid price amount cannot be more than 10 cents. Currently, the gap is 11 cents. And if it's above the 10 cent level, they're cast to either put the funds forward to make up the gap or increase meal prices. So we're putting a proposal here to increase meal prices by 15 cents per paid meal. And that only affects the paid students. It does not affect free or reduced students. And the 15-cent gap will cover next school year and probably the following school year. We came two years ago for a gap coverage to last two years, and this will last us another two years. So we're proposing an increase of 15 cents per meal. All meals will be $2.90 for paid student meals.
Mr. Keaton, it's 66%, 67% of us students around free or reduced lunch?
Currently, 66%, yes.
And so then what we're really talking about, not those, right?
Right, correct.
And so that the number of kids that actually pay for meals is really quite small?
Yes, yes.
Could I ask just a clarification? When we...
When we say reduced price, so, they're not affected by the increase?
No, the federal government gives us the, for a, currently, for a free student, we receive $3.24, and for a reduced student, we receive $2.84, and the gap is 40 cents, and that's what the federal government allows us to charge the parent, is the 40 cents. So, there is no gap there. So, it does not affect those students.
So, it does not affect, okay.
And Jim, we never really talk about how many meals in Johnston County they have on their, on their website, or their profile of the schools. They talk about actually how many meals they serve, and we never really talk about how many meals we actually serve to our children. You've done a masterful job making sure that we have universal breakfast, and increasingly universal lunch. Is that, are we getting there?
Yes, yes.
And so, those are things that, you know, we have to let our community know, how we feed our children, and the fact that no kid hungry is actually where we're trying to go. So, this modest increase of 15 cents is something that I think our parents who do pay will gladly absorb.
Just a clarification, for the entire district, for the 15 cents for all the parents split out over the year is less than $45,000 impact to all the parents.
We need a motion to...
Would you, we need a motion to approve the increase?
I still move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Under, seconded by Ms. Byer, that we approve the increase brought by administration. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
It oftentimes appears we don't get to celebrate enough of the successes, so before I introduce the next item, just leaving that item, Mr. Keaton, and through the leadership of Mr. Osteen and Mr. Denton, they have turned over a half a million dollar loss two years ago to a projected profit for this year. So, done a wonderful job running. Literally, monthly meetings go on, and Mr. Keaton's attention to detail on that has been phenomenal, and with his leadership and the leadership of others, not many districts can, one, stay where they're profitable, but take that kind of loss and turn it around. So, I'd just like to commend him publicly for a wonderful job.
And could I just add to that, that I think we don't highlight also anywhere near sufficiently that we provide healthy food, and that the work that Mr. Keaton and his staff have done to gently educate our students towards eating in a more healthy way has been effective. That's how education works, and it's not just in classrooms that we teach students. And I've seen it in practice, and I'm impressed and very appreciative of that work, and I think it pays off in healthier children. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm where Heidi Carter is smiling, Steve. Yeah.
Right, did I remember when we were in the red, we were talking about how a Krispy Kreme fundraiser brings in 20,000, and for us not to be able to get back in the black without doing that, kudos.
Next item on your agenda is the 2017-18 school nutrition services proposal and bid renewal. So, I'll turn that over to Jim as well.
Okay. We issued a request for proposal for our sanitation and safety and chemicals for this school year, and we also issued a proposal for our free and reduced printing and mailing. Each proposal went out with the indication that it could be renewed up to four additional years, so these are possible five-year proposals. We received bids in from both proposals, and we've chosen each proposal based on a criteria of not just the cost, but also the services provided, the needs of the district, and the overall scoring. And we've selected the SFS PAC, Portion PAC, to be the vendor for sanitation products and safety training. They're our current vendor as well. And WDGW, Don Woods Graphics, to be our free and reduced printer, which is also our current vendor. And then, in addition, we are proposing that we renew the contracts for five additional bids. Our current food and supplies is through Cisco Raleigh, and that's bid by the state of North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and that is on a, we're up for a second year renewal. Our milk products come from Pet Dairy, our bread products come from Flowers Bakery, and our pizza come from local Domino's vendors. So, our bread, milk, and pizza are all local companies, and we're asking to renew those bids this year, for this will be the second renewal out of five possible.
And Mr. Keaton, I can't help but ask, the pizza that you buy from Domino's is not the pizza they sell over the counter?
Correct. It's called the Smart Slice, it's whole grain, reduced fat, reduced sodium, and the pepperoni is actually turkey. So, yeah. Yes. Is there...
I think they've made some...
No, they were, they were done last year.
Yeah, samples.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and produce, RNH produce, I neglected that one, sorry. RNH produce from the fairgrounds in Raleigh is our produce vendor, and we're requesting to renew them for the second year.
I just want to know whether there's a word for turkey pepperoni.
They just call it pepperoni. Pepperoni. Working on my...
The board members request you bring samples next time?
Definitely.
Yes.
Any of your work sessions, sure.
Yes.
So, need a motion?
I move that we renew the contracts for Cisco, Pet Dairy, Flowers Bakery, Domino's Pizza, and RNH Produce at the current pricing structure.
Second. And also, did you get the printer in there? Is that part of that?
Those are two new bids.
You got those?
The two new bids are at the top.
All of it.
As well as the bids for FS PAC, is that correct? And DG Woots Printing?
Yes.
Thank you.
The move by Mr. Kason, and seconded by...
Patino? Second.
Ms. Umstead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm sure you would notice that Mr. Aaron Bullier led all the operations this evening, and that's usually Mr. Osteen's responsibility. Mr. Osteen is not out ill, he is in Boone at Appalachian State celebrating the graduation of his son.
Yes.
Which I think is a really good reason to miss a board meeting.
So, with that said, the next item being 8A, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pittman for revision of board policies.
So, good evening. Tonight, we are bringing four policies. We're back to our North Carolina School Boards Association work, and tonight, we're focusing on a subset of policies around technology. Ron Whalen and Eileen Batten are here to shepherd us through those revisions.
Good evening. So, I'm going to walk you through four policies that we're bringing before you tonight as the first read. The first one is Policy 3220, Technology in the Educational Program. This policy supports the selection of technology, deployment, professional development, and other related tools. It gives the big picture of the important work that the teachers do with technology in their classrooms. The next policy is Policy 3225. This is Technology Responsible Use. It replaces their current policy for acceptable use policies, or, in other words, the AUP. And this sets the expectations for the use of technology. This is an integral part of the educational program, and we feel it's so important that we wanted to make this policy only opt-out instead of parents having to opt into it. And so, therefore, we have created a Rules and Procedures Opt-Out Form, which is also in your packet on page 84, that you could see exactly what that means if a parent's going to opt-out of their use of, their students' use of technology. There's one caveat to that, though, because there's a lot of online testing, where students have to use the computer either for federal or state testing, and so, they would be granted a temporary technology use, even if the parents had signed this opt-out form, so that all students can take those tests online. The next policy is Policy 3226. This is the Internet Safety Policy. This policy ensures federal requirement compliance for Internet use in DPS, and we also have vertical alignment matrix in our curriculum that aligns the technology essential standards, which includes Internet safety for students and is taught by the school community. In this policy, in addition, it mentions how annual training is required for teachers, and that would be online and face-to-face training. And then, the last policy is Policy 3230. This is copyright compliance. This updates our policy and guides staff and students on appropriate copyright use and compliance. This policy aligns with state statutes and federal laws protecting the rights of creators of original works of authorship. And if you looked at the old policy, there had been some links, and there are broken links right now today, so this kind of puts the vocabulary back in the policy itself. If we could go, I'm sorry, to the first slide to let you guys know how we got here with the policies. We have all these stakeholders that have given us input into these policy revisions, and some of the items that they recommended for revision would be use of acronyms, PDA, for example, which means different now, today. And in the policy, when it was written, it meant the personal device assistant that was commonly known as Palm Pilots or Delaxiums, but today, you know, that in text lingo means something. So, we've kind of removed those acronyms and spelled out handheld devices and other things. So, yeah, I mean, it's kind of funny, but we had to do it for a reason. The language is different. So, you can see here, it went to all of the school staff, went to SPAC and STACK also for their feedback.
So, these policies are coming forward for first reading, and if you have any questions, we're ready to address those.
I had a question on 3230 with the copyright compliance. Just trying to figure out what has changed. Not quite clear on what, just looking at it.
Yeah, so, you will have in your packet a redlined version of the North Carolina School Boards Association policies. You'll also have in your packet the old copyright policy that is referred, that we currently have. And so, let me get to, let me get to the page number so you can...
Yeah, I'm looking at them, I think I am, it looks like they're the same. That's page one, what is that? 110?
No, no. That's Internet Safety, 110.
Oh, it looks like 10. It's 118.
118, thank you.
There you go.
119 and 120.
Okay, yeah, let me see where the...
We didn't have an...
We don't have changes on the North Carolina School Boards Association policies, but it does change from our current copyright policy that we have in the district. And so, you could refer back to the correlation guide when you read on the page...
The correlation guide.
85. This shows the current policy is 3060, which, when you go to it today, it has website URL links on the policy, which we've updated.
So, basically, the links are the change, the updated links.
And the vocabulary inside of the North Carolina School Boards Association strengthens it to guide the staff on how to use appropriately materials.
Thank you. And I apologize, I was one of the people who said, "These correlation tables are wonderful," and I didn't even use it, so my apologies.
The only note that I brought was, and we don't need to jump into it, but 3220B is the Development of Technology to Schools, and you've suggested some language between development or refresh plan. I'm not sure it's a policy that's going to really be governing practice that much, so splitting hairs on it isn't that big a deal, but for me, there is a difference between having refresh plan and knowing some of our buildings that I think are fairly technology poor and actually still need deployment. So, we don't need to split hairs in this, but it is something that I think about in where we are with our technology.
Yeah, we wanted to update that with current language that we use in the district to reflect the difference between deployment and what we do annually with the refresh.
I really appreciate you bringing all the stakeholders to the table and working on these policies. They were, of all the policies that needed updating, I'm sure they, for reasons of PDAs and other things, were definitely due for updating, and I especially like that you're actually having parents have to do an opt-out form. I think that's the right approach, and I hope that very few parents choose that form, and because of the future, technology is going to be such an important part of any career and life that children have. So, I would hope that we would make sure we translate it into Spanish going forward, and particularly because this is a form that you only do if you don't want your child to have access, that we make that instruction as clear as y'all can make it, because I know families with language barriers tend to just fill everything out. They try to be compliant, and they try to fill everything out. So, anything we can do going forward to make sure that this is rarely used? Is it in Spanish already? I'm sure it probably is, yeah.
It's been revised, so the new one will be translated, but the old one was in Spanish.
Correct, yes. That's correct.
What do we do to ensure that our teachers and media coordinators know what the copyright laws are? I mean, one of the ones that I, and I'm bringing it up because I want it to be said out loud, because I want people to know that showing a full-length movie constitutes a public display of the movie, and that would be against copyright laws.
Correct. So, yes, we do have procedures in place that help to instruct and guide our staff through the media coordinators, through our media programs and technology program that what is appropriate, what is not appropriate.
And it does have to relate to the curriculum, and it doesn't stop someone from using a clip from a movie that illustrates a point.
Correct, yeah.
But because, because it's been raining for seven days straight, showing The Lion King is probably not acceptable. Use, I mean, that would be against copyright laws, right?
Correct. It would also...
I would suggest that any teacher who needs to do that can instead show the board's budget discussion. I believe that will take up the class period and create docile students.
Mr. Under, I think it would be instructive.
So, this was the first reading, so we don't need any action. We need to know when to bring it back.
What we would suggest is that it go to the full board at the end of the month, on the full board agenda for consent, if you all are amenable, and that would serve as our second meeting, and then we would be adopting.
Do we have such a motion?
I could make it if I could get to the page where the titles are.
82.
Thank you. So, I would move the approval of Policy 3220, 3225, 3226, and 3230 with the revisions proposed by administration.
And be placed on the consent agenda?
Yes, to the consent agenda, thank you.
Second. This would move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Under, that we add the second reading of these four policies to our consent agenda for our May board meeting, which is our next board meeting, except for the special meeting on Monday. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will add that our chair works in technology and may want to pull this off, so perhaps we can encourage him to reach out to you ahead of time with questions.
We'll be prepared.
All right.
Thank you.
Given that we've tabled 8A, 9A, excuse me, the only follow-up item that Mr. Osteen asked that we share was that they are still working with the substitute committee, and that that committee has been formed and will continue to look at the issues related to substitutes. With that, no other information to share.
That being said, we are adjourned.
No follow-up items.
Excuse me?
No follow-up items.
That was his follow-up item?
That was the...
Yep. Thank you.